This meeting has been properly advertised in compliance with the requirements of the Sunshine Law. We'll start tonight with a moment of silence, and I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands on the nation, on your ground in this world, and that your teaching is just a star.
Mrs. Applegate?
Here.
Mrs. Dunlap?
Here.
Mrs. Donardo?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Mr. Hines?
Here.
Dr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Whitley?
Here.
I'd like to welcome our visitor. Take your hats off. Thanks for coming out in the rain, providing it to everyone else in town. For a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes of last meeting.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? No presentations, not going into the executive session. So the next department, district department reports, West Hampton Middle School, this hallway to leave.
Thank you very much. I also have a minute for WIS, would you like to hear this immediately after?
Yes.
Okay. So for the West Hampton Middle School, along with WIS, we recognize New Jersey's Week of Respect with daily activities planned by Mr. Doyle, our school counselor. Mr. Doyle visited the lunchroom daily and the classrooms throughout the week to reinforce the message of respect, care, and kindness in the school community. At the end of the week, there were five students between the middle school and the intermediate school who were recipients of a donated gift basket. The sharing from the cafeteria actually put the baskets together for them. And the students who received these baskets were nominated by their teachers as having demonstrated the epitome of respect throughout the week. For WIS and WMS, the PTO book fair is scheduled for the week leading up to and including parent-teacher conferences. A class schedule will be sent out to all parents so they know when their children will have the opportunity to visit the book fair. Last year, the book fair raised over $1,000 for Mr. Leonie to purchase library books for our library. Last Friday during the lunches, as a positive reinforcement for the students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we used a wheel of names to determine which students would receive a prize. In order for the students to have their names in that wheel, they had to be discipline referral-free since the beginning of this school year. And once the student's name was called, they were able to press the button to determine which prize they would receive. All of the prizes were actually donated. We had water bottles, book bags with school supplies, a ticket to the fall festival, tickets to the student council dance, and snack coupons from the cafeteria. So in total, we were able to give eight prizes away to each grade level. Students have also been informed that we will do this at the end of each month for those students who have not received discipline referrals. At the very end of the year, we'll have a separate group of names of students who did not receive a discipline referral throughout the entire school year. And this morning, the middle school recognized the September Students of the Month and the Musician of the Month with the traditional breakfast. Each student was also able to invite one parent regarding to join them for the breakfast. The Students of the Month were Carly Seal, Antoine Brown, Shay Delgado, McKenna Press, Toy Peebles, Haley Wosniewski, and Haley Rust. And for the intermediate school, the West Hampton Fire Department visited WIS last week for the National Fire Prevention Week. Firefighter Dave Shaw provided a one-hour assembly to students about fire safety, which included a conversation about the misleading videos that students may see on YouTube that make playing with fire look fun. Students seemed engaged and had lots of questions. And finally, with student councils up and running with school spirit days, the students have planned throughout the year.
For Students of the Month, what's the basis tonight?
The teachers meet together by grade level and choose a student who has demonstrated kindness, empathy, compassion. Grades are usually a factor of that. And so the teachers keep a bank of names that have been nominated so that they know, you know, throughout the year, which students might not have received it already but are still in the running for it.
Thank you. And Holly Hills and Special Services report, Mr. D.
Okay. Jen asked me to report that Holly Hills will have hayrides on October 25th, and she wants to thank the PTO for coordinating and providing the snacks. Harvest parties and Halloween parade will be on October 31st. Bus safety drills will take place next week, and parent conferences are coming up in early November. They're getting those all scheduled. That was it for Holly Hills. And for Special Services, we had the Resource Fair at Rancoas Valley Regional High School, if you can't get that, on the 8th, and we had a handful of families from West Hampton come, so it was nice to see that. And had a pretty good turnout, over 40 vendors, so it was a nice affair. Also, this month is physical therapy month, so on our website, we have the newsletter that our physical therapists wrote, along with our occupational therapists, who happen to just walk in. So there's some good information on there, so if you want to go to the website and read that, you will get some good information. Nothing else? That's it.
Can I miss the hit report? Do we get one?
Yes.
Okay.
Tonight, we are approving Mr. Brown, the H.I.B. coordinator, so he will get that report because he's here on the future. I'm on board tonight. Last month, we had one reported case of HIV at WIS and one in Holly Hills. Neither were found to be HIV, but both were found to be in violation of our code of conduct and appropriate consequences. But given there were no reports of HIV at WMS.
And can you call some of the other members, right?
I think I'll let Karen go first, because I take things away. I tend to say things, and you don't get to report them, and I feel bad.
No, that's okay.
You sure?
Not positive.
Because I got to speak. We were talking about it just before the meeting started, but the small playground in Holly Hills has been replenished with certified playground wooden mulch. The rubber mulch has been removed. What was left of it, I spoke to Mr. Saltoz, and he said that the great deal of rubber mulch had been worn away. The rubber madding underneath, the madding underneath had been sticking up in places, and kids were tripping into, tripping over it and pulling it up. And it was in need of replenishment, so we replenished it with playground wooden mulch as opposed to more rubber. We've got some dates and things coming in. The November 7th, we are anticipating our intermediate school canopy outside. Would be kind of handy tonight for someplace to run on. But the canopy that will extend to the base of the steps should be installed during the first week of November. And our bike rack at Holly Hills School is going to be here on November 18th. The area where that's going to be has been cleared out, cleaned out, so it should go right in, should install easily. That's going to be by the gym, on that hardtop area, we're going to call it parking lot, hardtop area by the playground, between the playground and the gym. Excited to announce that you can't get on it yet, but we have a West Hampton Township Facebook page, we have a West Hampton Township Instagram account. You can't find it yet because it's still locked down, as says the teachers that are doing it are playing with it and getting things ready for its unveiling. The website has also been, still in progress, but has been scrubbed of outdated links and broken links and outdated documents. We've been trying to make that much more user-friendly. We're also looking into, very, very early stages of looking into, a new website that would be more snappy-looking, more user-friendly, and have a mobile app attached to it, since more people use their phone than their computer and want to get information. So we'll have more on that as we continue to go down that road of social media. Lastly, I would like to throw out the idea again for the board to consider a Buildings and Grounds Committee as things come up, like the canopy and the bike rack and the playground and things like that. I would appreciate having a small group of people to run ideas past and bounce thoughts off of. And while any big projects would obviously be discussed with the whole group in a closed session, if we're talking about regular things that I could email out and meet with once a month, I would, I think, a committee to talk about priorities for the buildings and grounds would be a great help to me. I know we talked about it for the last couple of board meetings, but I don't want that idea to die on the vine here, and I'd like to have, to continue those conversations.
How do you think of those conversations?
Well...
Sorry. No microphone.
Somebody could say, "I think it's a good idea," or "I think that idea stinks," Patrick is out. No.
Pretty sure Malcolm's just volunteered to chair that committee. Anyone else want to be on? All right, I'll do it. Pleasure, Mr.
There you go.
There you go. Is everybody else okay with that?
Yeah.
I mean, well, we can keep everybody informed the same way we do on the other committees. Everybody's happy because we have volunteers. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Did he leave anything for you, Karen?
No.
All right. Okay, that was reports. We now open it up for public comments on agenda items only.
Our big one gets out.
Okay. No correspondence at this time. We're going to Education Committee reports versus the Budget Personnel Committee. We started, like, a motion to combine 11A1 to 11A16.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 11A1 is for payment of bills. 11A2, payment of cafeteria account bills. 11A3, to accept the resignation of our business administrator. 11A4, approval of district HIV coordinator. 11A5, approval of WMS Club Activity Advisors for 2019-20 school year, they're all listed here. And 11A6, superintendent calls for a motion to approve the following Activity Advisors for 2019-20. All those? Okay, I need to read more, sorry. Approval of 11A7, approval of homebound instruction. 11A8, approval of community outreach coordinator. 11A9, approval of confidential secretary payroll and HR. 11A10, approval of after-school tutoring. 11A11, approval of after-school ESL tutoring program. 11A12, approval of after-school tutoring staff members. 11A13, approval of after-school ESL tutoring program staff members. 11A14, approval of RTI position. 11A15, approval of RTI interventionist. And 11A16, approval of mentoring teacher. Do we have any questions on any of those?
If I could, Mr. Vice President, the, just so everyone knows, the, all of these positions were either part of the 1920 budget process or are being paid out of consolidated grant funds. There's nothing new or additional in this. Yes. Yes, very excited about that. The vision of that position, if I can jump ahead a year or so from now and say what I hope to have accomplished there, is that West Hampton Schools is viewed more and more as a community member, not just the school system. Along with the VFW and the rec league and the Fire Department and Police Department, the West Hampton Schools is part of the community and not just this entity that resides in the community. So what I hope to see is that interactions between our school community and other community services and programs, for instance, Veterans Day programs where we reach out to the VFW and include them. Maybe, and I'm making these things up, so I don't know if I'm quoting these exact things, but on the night of a play, maybe it's emergency responders night, and we have a little reception for Thursday night play, and we give free tickets to emergency responders in West Hampton. Those kinds of things where we are inviting the community in, providing service for the community, and then we build that relationship to where we can go our ways. But when community events take place, we should have a presence there, whether it's our National Junior Honor Society is manning a table at the Fireman's Fleet Market or the National Night Out, where the school is taking on responsibility for making sure something happens. We want to be a responsible community member instead of just running the school system. And we've talked about this for a couple of years, and this is an opportunity to say, "Okay, this person, take this amount of time and devote it to solving this, and let's see if we can get some momentum."
So this person could be essentially going to be someone whose activities coming up with all...
Yeah. Yes, bringing together people to brainstorm some of the ideas, reaching out, making sure that our chorus and our drama and our art club and all of those different things that we have in the world in schools, council, and National Junior Honor Society realize that there is such a thing as the community coordinator so that we can coordinate, that's terrible, but we coordinate things between different groups. Initially, we want to identify who those groups are and have contact with them, knowing that they're our source and that we really count on them. I'm excited about that, where I can take us.
Any other questions on any of these items? Need a motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Applegate?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Nichols?
Yes.
We move on to Curriculum Committee, Community Committee. And the superintendent calls for a motion to approve the submission of HIV school self-assessment for the 2018-19 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Superintendent calls for a motion to approve the following WMS field trips for 2019-20 school year, they're all listed below. Motion to approve. We need a roll call for this, because there's plenty of...
Mrs. Applegate?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunlap?
Yes.
Mrs. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
And the superintendent.
I'm sorry. Did we do any follow-ups in regards to cleaning up the park?
Yes. When I spoke to the National Junior Honor Society advisor, she said she reached out, she didn't know where to start, she reached out to the Burlington County Park Ranger. And that was, and to say that this was something that the group wanted to do, and how would they go about doing that? Tell them they get permission to do that, how, you know, what would they have to do? And the Burlington County Park Ranger walked them through whatever the process is, and that they recommended that park. So think of this county involvement, if not township involvement. County pride.
Just to clarify, because this came up in our committee meeting, that the park they're cleaning up doesn't happen to be in our town, so it's in Womburg. So we're just wondering if there was something they can do in our town, but I guess the students picked that up specifically.
I did ask that specifically. It was told was the guidance of the Burlington County Park Ranger.
All right, so the superintendent calls for a motion to approve the following National Junior Honor Society events and activities for 2019-20, and those are all listed below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, we move on to Legislative and Policy Committee. These are first reading for bylaws, the superintendent calls for a motion to approve the first reading of the following, of the below Board of Education policies and regulations, they're all listed below. Motion to approve.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. There are no information items at this time. The enrollment report is listed in your booklet or email. The fire security bus drills are listed below. Suspensions are in our booklet or email. Other reports, none at this time. No miscellaneous action items. Superintendent calls for a motion to approve the facilities use calendar at the Holly Hills West Hamptons Middle School.
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Reports of the School Administrator Board Secretary, those are in the booklet or email. No information items at this time. Monthly attendance record is in the booklet or your email. Cafeteria report is in the booklet or email. And the building inspection report also in the booklet or email. Okay. We're going to move on to, we're going to combine 13D1 to 15A1. But before we move to that, we're going to remove 13D25 as it repeats from 13D8. 13D25 is the same as 13D8. We're both going on 25. So with the exception of 13D25, I'd like a motion to combine 13D1 to 15A1. All those in favor? All of us, it's a roll call.
Mrs. Applegate?
We'll get a question?
Yep, real quick.
To combine?
No, there'll be questions after that. You're right.
I'm sorry.
Yes, the roll call will come again, correct? Yes, so this is just a motion to combine. So, motion to combine.
He had it, right?
I even studied. Did we get the motion to combine?
We did. The motion and the second.
Okay, so now we just need, all those in favor? Do combine?
To combine.
Aye.
Aye.
We'll get this right.
And abstained. Okay. Now I'll read through them, and then we'll ask questions after that, before we roll call. Okay, 13D1 is resolution for monthly reports for the Board Secretary Treasurer. Resolution 1119, accepting reports of the Secretary Treasurer. 13D2, mileage reimbursement. 13D3, approval of student school year placements. 13D4, approval of student school year placement. 13D5, approval of student school year placements. There's a lot of these. 13D6, approval of student extended school year placement. 13D7, approval of his student school year placement. 13D8, approval of student school year placement. 13D9, approval of student school year placements. 13D10, approval of student school year placements. 13D11, approval of student school year placements. 13D12, approval of student school year placements. 13D13, approval of student school year placement. 13D14, approval of student school year placement. 13D15, approval of student school year placement. 13D16, approval of student school year placement. 13D17, approval of student school year placement. 13D18, approval of student school year placement. 13D19, is resolution 1219, approval of transfers. 13D20, approval of 2018-19 West Hampton tuition rates. 13D21, approval of West Hampton 2019 tuition rates. 13D22, approval of resolution number 15-19 toilet room facilities for preschool. 13D23, approval of resolution 1319 long-range facilities plan. 13D24, approval of resolution 14-19 insurance membership renewal. 13D26, approval of student school year placements. 14, no unfinished business. And then 15A1, approval of substitute teacher support staff and custodians. Now, any questions? Any of those?
Just a quick question. Motion 13D12, approval student placement, would the sending district being Philadelphia School District?
Yes. It's a displaced student. Maybe Jean might be able to provide a little more information.
Not trying to deny anyone access to the school who wants to pay for it, it seems...
She's McKenna Vento eligible, so she's displaced from Philadelphia.
Okay.
And living here, so it's her option to come to school in the district where she's residing.
Want to go high? No, because then we could be responsible for paying it back to the districts if we estimate...
So it's a price per kid, per teacher, blah, 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 whatever we add.
Any other questions?
I am going to ask something on the long-range plan, let's say. What is that more authorizing Harrison to do?
Amend the long-range facilities plan?
Yeah.
To do a project, you have to, with the state, amend the long-range facilities plan before you can do anything else.
But we're also authorizing them to submit an application? What is that?
We take that over. So I believe part of that is the new entrance, correct? So in order to use capital reserve money, which is the idea the district wants to use, it has to be in your long-range facilities plan per law. So your, so Harrison, we have to go submit that occupation to the Department of Education. You cannot do any work until the project is formally approved. So the resolution is authorizing them to amend the long-range facilities plan, so in the future, you're allowed to use funds for that use.
So the application that they're submitting has a specific plan and cost in all of that?
So you already have a long-range facilities plan that breaks down estimated costs in each project?
Okay, but this one isn't in all projects.
It's not in the project yet, so that's why you have to amend the long-range facilities plan.
Okay, so I guess I understand the third paragraph, in that they're amending the long-range plan, but the first paragraph is talking about they're actually submitting an application.
It's an application to amend the long-range facilities. It's an application to amend the long-range facilities plan.
So in that application, is it necessary to have details on what they are doing and the cost of?
Estimated, correct. It's about a 60 Excel files gone with the application.
Okay.
So it's pretty detailed.
And we, do we know the cost of what they're saying this project will be before it's being submitted?
For this, the cost isn't going to be 100% accurate. We just want an idea. Say again.
Do we know the range?
I don't mean to cut you off. We don't, we didn't approve.
No, we're not. This is the first, the way, the way it was explained to me from Garrison is that in order to, in order to do the project, it has to be in a long-range facilities plan. In order for it to be the long-range facilities plan, we have to submit an application to amend our current long-range facilities plan.
Okay.
So I don't know that until we pass this, if Garrison knows an estimated amount of costs. So once we approve, they said this is our first step. Give us approval to amend the long-range facilities plan will allow us to get estimates for the cost to build into the, to build into the amendment. So no, we don't, we don't know, we don't know anything yet. This is, this is the, this is unlocking the door to allow us to start down that road. Next metaphor.
Alright. Any other questions?
Was there ever a discussion about that with project and it wasn't estimated that was in there? Or we had a thought?
Yeah, it's a, but it's buried in a, in a bulk project. And I, and I didn't know how much we could count on that.
Okay.
You know, it's like buying a car and somebody saying the radio is worth $500.
Right.
Is it, if I only want the radio, are you gonna charge me $500?
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
So in order to even approach having a long-range facility, you have to submit a, an application saying, hey, we want, what can you do in this, do this? Now that you've been looking to, kind of like, really owning the property and getting a zoning permit to say, I want to put a, a weekly store there. So can I mean, it's just a, like a school or a type thing, but, you know, applications like, hey, if you want to put this in there, we know you want to do it. And we don't have part of a foot thing, you want to use this one. So in order to do that, they have to submit. Whatever reason, they submit the plan and then it gets approved that that's part of the long-range plan. So that you could have, when we're towards that.
So do we have a cost on what that charge is for them to do that?
We don't need it, yeah.
No, the cost of the application.
The cost of the application, what Garrison is charging us.
Part of their contract.
Yeah, I mean, how?
I don't think Garrison charges us that way, right? But we have, we have a, we have a.
We have a marketing team. We pay them a fee every year for things like this. They're under contract.
I thought Garrison was on an arrow in this. Like, are attorneys on it?
Are the attorneys actually on it?
Yeah, but I thought Garrison was arrow. We don't pay them a flat return payment, do we?
We don't.
Yeah, so they're gonna charge us a certain amount of money to... I was just wondering what the charge is. Are we talking a thousand or are we talking 300 or are we talking? Because we have no money in this.
I honestly, I, I.
We're authorizing them to do something.
I, I don't know this. I don't think they're charging us for this because if, the only way that they make money is to do work for us. The only way they're gonna do work for us is if a long-range facilities plan has to work any. Yeah, I, I honestly don't. I mean, I could be wrong. And I will tell you, we'll find out and I'll tell you if I'm wrong. But I, I don't believe, I mean, I, I talked to, Garrison doesn't work like, like our attorney does. I call my, I would, I call our attorney.
I know. No, the fox talks.
Garrison's come, he's come and met with me, he's walked the buildings with me. And we, we don't get bills like that. He gets, he gets his payday when we build something. But we'll check out, check it out. I'll make sure I'm right with you.
Any other questions?
No, no questions.
I gotta keep looking over here. Alright, so we need a motion to approve.
Second.
And roll.
Mrs. Appley.
Yes.
Ms. Decker.
Yes.
Ms. Tenardo.
Yes.
Mr. Bagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mr. Hines.
Yes.
Dr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Whitley.
Yes.
Alright. And we'll open it up for public comment on non-agenda items only. Alright, I have to read this. Is it anticipated that before addressing the board, individuals have given the appropriate school district staff an opportunity to address all issues and questions. Questions and/or comments should be directed to the board president and/or the superintendent. The total allotted for public comment is 15 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes of comment time. In an effort to assure your speakers given the full three minutes of comment time, please complete your statement and/or ask all questions that indicate the order.
I have to say my name and my, Colin Ryan, 115 Kings Road, West Hampton. I know it's causing you a headache because it's causing us a headache.
He's gonna say something about buses. I guarantee this is a lot.
Yeah, what, what's going on?
What's, what's the latest on your end? Because I haven't, I have no.
I don't see a lot on mine from the middle school, but our intermediate school child hasn't been used to long time yet. Maybe once placed, but, um, where the buses go by our house. Because I guess the bus drivers are feeling the crunch, so they're under a lot of stress. So like, what's the final verdict?
Well, I mean, I don't know that it's a final verdict. We had a, we had a meeting, last week? Two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, the building principals, the owner of the bus company and his, and his dispatcher came over. And we spent, we spent a while going over what we were talking is really our punch list. I mean, 95%, probably more than that, of our students are getting to school on time every day without, without an issue. We have some, we have some outliers still. A bus, one, one bus is, is a particular problem. And, and, and the, the problem with that is that, um, West Hampton Township isn't a small geographic township. It's concentrated, its population in certain areas. But the buses that have to go out to Oxmead and Kings and, and out towards the Turnpike Entrance, those are long runs. And, that's not an excuse, but it is a reason why it's not, it's not, it doesn't go, it doesn't go well. I don't think that we've had, I think all of the, were you talking about the intermediate school? Is that what you're?
In particular, yeah.
In particular. Um, I, the intermediate school has five, has six runs. Five of them are showing up on time every day. And one is routinely a few minutes late. A couple to every now and then, it's a lot.
More like 20 minutes late.
No, it's not, no, it depends. If you're, if you're talking 8:45 is the start of the day.
8:45, I, it gets to my house at 8:40, so I was gonna pick up other kids and then drop kids off at Holly Hill.
I've been, I've been, what, the reports I'm getting from, from the intermediate school office is that that bus is often after 8:50, but not past 9:00. So we're falling into a five to 10-minute range, which is unacceptable. But we're still working on it. The idea is that we're, we're trying to pull a couple stops off of other routes without making them late to make that route shorter.
Yeah.
Uh, we're trying to hustle the, one thing that shaved off sometimes is we had two buses that were, that were driving us crazy. One did get fixed because we're trying to get the route that happens before us, the Rancopa's Valley Route, to get done faster. So that it can get to the middle school faster, so that it can get to the elementary and intermediate schools faster. So sometimes it's not our routes, but the time that they're showing up to start them.
Yes.
So I, as much as I hate this.
I mean, as long as you're working on at least that route, I don't, I can't speak for all the other.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Their problems, but.
But, you know, and I, you know, I, I'll say this in public and I mean it. But you don't, any, any time, it's not, it's, every day it's not right, tell us. Because we hound the bus company. If I don't hear from you, I'll think, I'll think that they told me things got better, I'll, I'll believe them. Uh, I check in, you know, the, the principals keep telling me when buses are late and buses have.
Well, they see me all the time. I've driven my son to the school a while, I don't know how many times. Because we aren't sure if the bus.
Right.
Right past us, which it's sent a few times, or if it just, or if it's really late, so. I mean, if it's being worked on, that's.
It, it's constantly being worked on. I wish I could, I mean, there's no reason that it's been being worked on on October 17th. I mean, that's.
Yeah. And the last thing we want is bus drivers in a rush.
No, absolutely. Absolutely. We're trying to shorten a couple of runs. Um, and it, it gets complicated. Like, uh, there's stops on Jacksonville Road. You have to have the bus pointing in the right direction because you don't want to get across on Jacksonville. Uh, so, you know.
That kind of, like, so my second point is, have you ever thought of, as a committee, to implement some kind of geo-tracking system for the buses where you all know where they're at? Parents all know where they're at, works they're at?
I have actually, we, we started looking into something like that. It gets a little complicated because we don't own the buses.
Yeah.
Um, but we, Karen and I have been, have been talking about how can we have better control over the buses so that we can at least communicate better? Some of the, some of the most frustrating times are when a bus is late and we don't know. You know, if a bus is gonna be late, a common thing, uh, if Shantin knows this, is, is that a bus will come, uh, we got eight middle school runs and only seven show up. And one of them is going to go drop off their kids and come back and get the rest. And when we know that, we get to give the parents a heads up.
Yeah.
And we don't know that, everybody's scrambling. You know, it's, it's 25 after 3:00 and, and we're missing a bus. We, we got kids that are cranky. Uh, we got parents that don't know what's going on. And worst of all, that bus now has to take those kids home and go get it. And come get the intermediate or elementary school kids.
So you're describing the performance of Wills, right? The bus company right now?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Would you be willing to sign a contract of immediately next year, given the performance they're giving you?
Probably. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of challenges with buses. And a couple of them are fiscal and a couple of them are just flat-out practical. One is, is that we go out for, we go out for runs at the beginning of the year and occasionally, no one bids on them. And we've had to tell parents, this year, we've had to tell parents, right, Miss Ebert? Uh, that we can't get your kid to school. Because we, we, we bid the run and no, no one, no one wants to do it. Um, and, and they, and, and those bus companies could literally say anything to us as far as a price, and, and we'd have to consider it. But they don't have the people. They can't bid on it because they don't have the drivers. From what I understand, talking to GST and talking to, um, Wills, uh, it's not a matter of equipment. There's, there's bus, empty buses in yards all over the place. It's a matter of, of bodies that are willing to drive them. So we could go out for a brand-new proposal for all of our runs. But that is extremely dangerous. And, and I speak from experience because the previous district I worked in, we had a bus company, we had 30 or so runs. We always complained about the service, kind of like we're doing now. And they charged us X number of dollars every year. And if you renew, and Michael checking on this, if you renew with the same company, there is a fixed amount that they can raise the price on you every year. If you go out for a brand-new quote.
I'm sure there's benefits.
They can charge whatever they want.
Yeah.
So we went out, this was five or six years back. We went out, we said, we're done, we're putting it out, so let's see what we get. The only people that bid on it was the same company. And they, 50% price hike. And we were, we were stuck. I mean, I'm not saying that would happen, but I'm saying we gotta be really, really careful before we break a relationship that we're not sure we can replace. Unfortunately, less than two weeks.
I know it's not an easy undertaking, I know.
No, but I.
I know our contracts work being a business. I don't hold up my end of the contract and, you know, people might be, tell them money back or whatever, so.
There's nothing that feels more helpless than being in the middle like that, like you're, like you're describing. I got upset parents for good reason. And I've got a, a service provider who is saying, fix it, we'll fix it, fix it. And then the next day, it isn't fixed. It's frustrating.
Okay.
A big part of the problem is actually drivers. And it's hard for them to get drivers. And it really, that problem goes to the state. Because the state has so heavily regulated the drivers, they can't recruit them. So it's something that's beyond any of our control and even the bus company's control.
Yeah. If they pay somebody enough money, they're gonna want the job.
Well, yeah.
We did add one route this year, and we went out for just a single route to try and alleviate some of the problems that we, that we saw last year. And it has helped. May not be easy to see or hear. Uh, but even that single route went to a different bus company because Wills didn't have the drivers to add another.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thanks.
Alan Hines, 81 Rancopa's Road. Not to beat the dead horse that we just stopped on. But my son is having an issue that he spoke with Mr. Brown about, Browning, about. That he is one of the first kids picked up in the morning. And then in the afternoon, he's the last kid dropped off. And we've always been under the impression that if you're the first one picked up, you're the first one dropped off, the bus runs the same route. So he had spoken to Mr. Browning about it. Said, I'm, uh, on bus eight, it doesn't run the same route in the morning. It stays over here towards this side of town before it goes back towards our side of town. And it's about half an hour if you add it all up. So there's an extra half hour a day that gets them, I mean, spends on the bus versus being home sooner. End of the world, no. But the other issue I'm having is that my wife sent a letter in to one of the office staff at the middle school, uh, asking about it, looking forward. And the email was sent Thursday, and I know we were off Friday and Monday. I don't know if administration was in or not. It's now Wednesday, and she is holding out till Monday before she comes down to speak with somebody at the middle school about that bus situation. So, um, I don't know how Mr. Browning was supposed to get back to my son since he never asked him his name. Because I said, well, did you tell him who you are? And he said, no. Okay. He said, I'll look into it. Alright, so after that, we decided to look into it. Just giving everybody a heads up that come Monday, probably gonna get a visit from somebody that's down the street.
With your last name?
It's very possible. I'm just changing it and I don't know about it.
Do you know what, what bus number that is?
Bus eight? So again, it could be something small, but he, he calls us about quarter after 3:00 when he gets on, gets home somewhere close to the 10th and 4th. So obviously down the road, can't take 30 minutes to get there. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
You're been around the bus all morning, so you're the first one off.
Alright, so closing public comments. Board Presidents Record. I, I wanted to, I actually had a, wanted to talk about teachers volunteering. Because we had, we had several positions open before this month. And we, we pay them something, but it's really not a lot for the, for the work they put in. So I, I wanted to, there's some teacher representatives, but I wanted to thank those teachers for stepping up. I also am involved with Girls on the Run, and we have four staff members that volunteer. And there's no staff to, to help with that. So I just wanted to point out that we have, there's some great teachers in this district that, that do volunteer and do extra work for, for the students. That it's not for pay, definitely. Um, and then I'm gonna thank you guys for volunteering also, kind of. And that's it. And we're not going to an executive session, so we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? And, done.